Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of this committee. I addressed this committee with not all of these people on it last November when we were talking about infill and a text amendment for something that had happened, and I wondered if the staff could possibly go back, so I can point out the beginning of this to you, to where it shows the development at 11th Avenue and McDowell.
What, this one?
No, no, no. It was in the upper-left corner.
Okay.
Ah, back, no, that's not it. Go forward.
I know, it's one that has story. So...
No, that's not it.
One more.
That's it, right there. In the upper-left-hand corner, it was beautiful apartments that had existed for more than 50 years, and when the crash came, the developer couldn't handle it, they burned twice. A stealth replat took place there at the southeast corner of 11th Avenue and McDowell Road that affected two neighborhoods, FQ Story to the south of McDowell and Encanto Palmcroft to the north. And Councilwoman Valenzuela will remember that I talked about that last November, and I'm happy to be here again to speak about what we and staff have been working on. We do support a text amendment that would ensure established neighborhoods have greater protection in the development process. I asked then that neighborhood representatives be involved, and we've been meeting almost every month, so we've invested quite a bit of time in this. But we also want to ensure that variances in the zoning processes are not infringed upon as well. And in the material that you've been presented, we are especially interested in the phrase, "A neighborhood context plan would be required." That's going to be the key to defining the context of the neighborhoods. Another concern is, and I know Mr. Stevenson addressed this, is that the area is generally defined as north of McDowell, south of northern, 19th Avenue to the west, and 44th to the east. Well, a couple of concerns there. I would suggest that we think about extending it to the I-10 boundary on the south, and then on the west of 19th Avenue is a small neighborhood, the smallest and the weakest of the historic districts, Vela Verde. And we think that there needs to be some protection afforded to that neighborhood. And then I do look forward to working with staff on the text amendment that provides design review requirements to ensure that established neighborhoods can be maintained and that the homeowner's investment in their neighborhood is secure. Thank you very much for listening. Any questions?
I have a question, Gigi.
Yes, Councilwoman.
What specifically are you asking within this text amendment?
I am suggesting that the boundaries be looked at and adjusted south to the northern boundary of I-10. That would include a portion of the FQ Story neighborhood, and a little bit farther west, the 19th Avenue to include the Vela Verde neighborhood.
Okay.
That's one thing. Of course, I'll probably have more questions and suggestions as time moves on, but that's it for today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Louisa Stark.
I'd like to go last.
Reed Butler, who is both in favor of and opposed. That's the first time I've seen that on a card.
I'd like to go last. [laughter] Chairwoman Gallego and members of the subcommittee, thank you very much. The reason I marked both, which maybe I've done once in the last few years, this is a great idea. I mean, neighborhood integration matters. When you come in as a developer into these neighborhoods, you need to fit in. So it's an excellent idea. I've had the pleasure of working with Gigi and Louisa over the years, and we find ways to fit in to existing communities. Because when you're the infill developer, you're changing that condition. In 2013, we invested $45 million in infill projects in the city of Phoenix. One in Sunny Slope, one in District 4 next to Grand View School, one in District 8 next to the Ranch Market in the Garfield neighborhood. So I'm very familiar with working in these infill neighborhoods. The reason I marked both, Chairwoman, is two suggestions. One is, would the city exclude historic buildings and adaptive reuse projects? Because, not to get out of any regulation, but there are already provisions for design review and other guidelines if you're in a historic neighborhood, working on a historic structure. So I would suggest we don't need another layer of regulation for those kind of conditions if it's already covered in another way. So it'd be a question for staff to think about. The other thing that we talk about often is, would there be incentives for this kind of development? So if there's added regulation to create design standards, design guidelines, in these core neighborhoods, would there be incentives to developers to comply? These are always difficult things to talk about, but would there be height incentives, density incentives, lot coverage incentives? If we're going to have design guidelines which cost money and time, would we incent some of that by providing these black-and-white incentives? Then a developer could look at the code and say, "If I want to come do infill and I want to design up to fit the neighborhood, I'm getting some incentives to help offset my cost of doing that." My final point in the incentive area, and Alan has heard me talk about this for years, he's tired of hearing it. All these projects need infrastructure help. They just do. Councilwoman Pastore, the project we finished at 11th Avenue and Highland next to Grand View School, 62 affordable apartments, $10 million investment. But we had to spend $150,000 on public infrastructure to improve the public sewer, which improved the public sewer for others in that area, not just for our 62 apartments. So is there a way to create some infrastructure relief? We don't mind fixing 50-year-old infrastructure that is owned by the city, but can we get some offset in some way to help pay for that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Stark.
Madam Chair and members of the committee, my name is Louisa Stark, and I live in the FQ Story neighborhood. So as Gigi George pointed out, I think we were on the cutting edge of one of these infill projects. And I do want to say that we have been meeting with Alan Stevenson and his staff. The meetings have been extremely positive, and we are very happy as to the way they are moving on. There may be a few little bumps along the way, and we will shout and scream probably about them, but indeed, he and his staff have been wonderful about working with our neighborhoods. And I'd also like to thank very much, although I don't see her here, Bethany Samidhar, who has been working very closely with the neighborhoods on issues such as this. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I, why did we, we have many of the historic neighborhoods, but not all of them? Can you talk a little bit about that decision?
Chairman Gallego, members of the subcommittee, we are open to looking at anything in terms of the direction the subcommittee is, including other ones. We're happy to do that. The working boundaries we came up with, the predominant criteria was kind of older, developed areas in terms of existing housing stock, and also getting newer development pressure. So where we have new projects that are coming in, that, you know, more than just one here or there, that are causing issues in the neighborhood. So that's kind of why we chose the boundaries that we did. And again, it's just to start that discussion off. So in further discussions with the neighborhood groups, and as we go through the village and that, you know, we'll look at some other boundaries and changes as well.
Wonderful. And could you, do we have an answer for Mr. Butler's question about the adaptive reuse and historic?
Well, we certainly do on the adaptive reuse, because adaptive reuse is adaptively reusing an existing building. So it's going to be much harder to meet design guidelines when the building is what it is. We don't have as much legal authority when somebody, when the building's already built and they're doing interior modifications and those things to make them, you know, adjust building height, put on architectural details. So certainly for adaptive reuse, I would like to discuss the historic preservation component with Michelle Dodd, our historic preservation officer, and we can certainly bring that back to, you know, the subcommittee as part of the process and discuss it.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilwoman Pastore.
Well, Councilwoman Gallego asked the question, but how north of McDowell? I go north of McDowell, starting from 19th Avenue and then go all the way to 44th?
Mm-hmm.
To northern?
To northern.
Okay, got it. If we could expand that, that'd be great. That'd be a great dialogue, but I'm assuming that once this is approved, then it goes back out to the villages, and we'll get more dialogue, and it comes back, and it's going to be refined, and it'll come back to us. And so that's the, we're getting the process going.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastore, the only place this has been publicly is, as Gigi mentioned, in November, it came before the subcommittee. And so we're back again for the status update.
What are the goals I hope that happens within this process is the plot and the community or neighborhood notification. I struggle with that because I do feel that people are entering the neighborhood, and it's an established neighborhood, and there are certain, you know, people want to know what's happening within their neighborhood and also what's going to happen with a property around them. And so I struggle with that push-pull on what's the, what's the happy medium, or where we can come to a compromise, where we're not violating the law, or where we're not going to be sued, but be able to come to a happy medium where everybody is not necessarily happy, but there's a process into play. So I'm hoping that through this process, we get there. That's where I'm struggling with right now, because I really do think, and it happens within, well, I live in those neighborhoods, so I see it. And so 11th Avenue and McDowell, that one was shocking, and it's not as pretty as I thought it would be or be in that neighborhood, especially that neighborhood. So that's where I struggle. And so I'm hoping that the villages and everybody will look at that and see what can happen, what is possible. So I don't know if there's anything, or you guys already looked at it, and it's just not there.
We can certainly look at that some more. I think part of the, you know, we outlined our concerns with it, but certainly if that's the direction of the subcommittee, then that's the direction we'd go in. There are some practical and some legal challenges related to that, but we can look at maybe how we can have a little more dialogue with neighborhood groups earlier on in the process. You know, we do have, for example, as part of the preliminary site plan review process, there is a public meeting that the public can come to. It's posted, but there isn't any notice, you know, about it to the surrounding public. And so if you were involved in a zoning case, then you typically know about that, but if you weren't, it's not something that the public, you know, typically attends.
Yeah.
We can look at something on that.
And this goes back to the dialogue that you and I have been having in planning and zoning and all the different rezonings that are happening within the neighborhood of how do we get from the very beginning neighborhoods and developers talking and saying, "Okay, this is what we like to see, this is what we don't, this is where we can," and eventually get that conversation to where, okay, we can, we're both satisfied with what's happening, and we blessed this to go through by the time it gets to the council where it's not as contentious rezoning type of piece. And I think we just need to have to start having those dialogues earlys with the neighborhood and what they can and cannot do in the sense of the law, and what the city can and can't do, but be able to educate what, really educate the community of what the process is, so that then there is a voice. And as, and I know you were talking about false, sense of false of public concern in the sense of coming to the council, and they really, we really, they've met all the 50 designs, and we've checked it off, and all it is, is a formal vote, and there's a false sense of security as to them coming to the meeting and us not being able to really hear their voice. I think still having that process and them being heard, and it's on the record, it's on the record, and the voice was heard. So we can look, I'm hoping that we could be open and look at that, and if not, then at least we looked at it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeCiccio.
Just a few things, and thank you, Madam Chair. A couple things, one on the plat. It's just illogical to me to be doing notifications when the decision's already been made. It doesn't make any sense at all. So as you go moving forward, if you can't really do anything about it, that process needs to be done at the beginning, not at the end, when the decisions are already in place. And that is kind of the line, at least that's the direction I'm giving staff, is that that doesn't seem logical at all. But if we can create a better way of notifying individuals at the beginning of a process, when the decisions are actually being made throughout, a plat is a plat. It's not a, it's administrative function. It's just what it is. But when you start actually creating the zoning, that's when things start to happen. Now, I just want to just give a note of caution here as we move forward with this, and just a couple of things to think about. Right now, our economy's starting to move just a little bit. You know, one of the things that everyone tries to do at times, like, "Well, gosh, I want to start controlling these aspects of it," and then it starts squashing the economy. Be incredibly carefully, as you move forward, with anything that we do that creates another regulation, another requirement, another cost to individuals in order to be able to do this. In some areas of the city, you'll find redevelopment occur regardless of the requirements, because it's an area that people want to be in, and they'll do that, they'll pay the extra amounts. But if you're looking for redevelopments to occur throughout the city of Phoenix, be careful in all these extra requirements. Just a thought, if you add $1,000, $2,000 more on a cost of an individual unit for someone to purchase, then you start taking people out of the market, because it's virtually impossible for individuals to qualify as it is now. But every cost adds on to whether or not that person can qualify. You always take somebody out of the market every time you add a cost on. The other is, there is a difference between notification and voice, which I'm strong supportive of, letting people know what's going on, and control. It goes back to the argument, is that, you know, people have a right to control their own property. Individuals not owning that property have a right to say something about it. Then it's up to the council to make the determination. So as you move forward, look at that balancing act as much as you can. The other, and probably the last, and the one that I'm really worried about, is that, I mean, I look at iconic things occurring in the city of Phoenix, archonic structures and things that were developed. If you look at the Bridle Path, that is one of the most iconic pieces of history that we have in the city of Phoenix. Under the new development standards that we have, you can't build that anymore. Can't do it anymore, because it's, you got to have your curb gutter, you got to have all that in it. You can't do that type of project anymore. So this move and this drive to sameness is something that we need to think very carefully and tread carefully on it again. If we want to be the same, then you're going to create the red tile roof everywhere, and it's not the same in every neighborhood. So if we could always think about that in the back of our minds, are we adding quality on? Are we adding costs on in some areas that make it prohibitive for individuals to get in? What is it we're really trying to get accomplished there? Firstly, I would like to see loosening of some of those standards that allow things like the Bridle Path to occur in other parts of the city. I mean, and if you look in District 8, I think it's one of the most pristine areas that we have in the city. We just do. I mean, it's, the Baseline Road corridor is just beautiful, but everything's starting to look the same there again. You know, it's because of the rules and the regulations that we put in, that everything has to fit these guidelines. So as we look forward, as you move forward with this, and I know it's new, the plat thing, I think, is DOA. I don't think it doesn't make any sense for us to even hit that direction. But as you move forward with requirements and directions that we're looking at, look at the uniqueness that allows maybe a lessening of requirements in those areas that allow different things to come in. And, oh, I wanted to bring up one more thing about this incentive part two. It makes sense. I mean, if you're going to, and we're looking at it, doing this part, a text amendment, but it's also parts of Arcadia and other areas. If you're going to be giving something, then also create an incentive where they get something, you know, they can't put two-story homes in an area. You know what I mean? That's something that neighbors would agree to. So look at the incentives too, that we could provide neighborhoods and developers or property owners or individuals that could give them an incentive to do what it is you want to do. If you want to do social engineering, that's usually the best way to do it, rather than creating a hammer over their head. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Now, do we, I understand we're all giving you direction, but do you actually need a motion? Because I have a few things.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Valenzuela, that'd be great if you could. If you're not, and you just want to give individual comments, that's certainly fine.
We went through the topic, and I do remember being on the subcommittee. I chaired the subcommittee in November. We went through, and I do appreciate, it's kind of nice to get city staff and our incredible neighborhood leaders and a member from the development community all saying, "Hey, this is a good thing, we're on the same page," because it's not always the case. But, you know, everyone who spoke, I believe their hearts are in the community and right here for our city. So tell me what you all think of this motion. I move to approve this item as presented with the direction to continue working with the neighborhood group to focus on refining the neighborhood integration design guidelines, and then bring back a text amendment through the villages and the rest of the public hearing process. This approach best protects existing neighborhoods from the negative impacts of infill development.
One second.
And I say that as a fan of infill development. I think we've seen far too much sprawl over the years when, you know, before the recession, I think the recession has forced us to look inward, which is what everyone literally did with their personal household and their personal neighborhood. And I don't want to see the city of Phoenix lose focus of that, so, but there are negative impacts, and so all things should be considered, and so that would be my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could I add, like, maybe a couple word changes in there? Do you mind?
Not what you meant.
Maybe a positive impact of infill development that's done correctly. I mean, because I think, like, if you look at parts of the city, some, you know, we can find one or two negative things, but there's so many good things that are happening with infill. So why don't we emphasize what we see positive occurring with infill development and make that part of the motion? If we could, emphasizing those areas, if that's okay.
Of course it is. I think that's the whole purpose. We have, do you mind, we have Louisa?
Would you mind going to the microphone?
In listening to, in listening to this discussion, I was, I felt there was some concern on the part of the four of you about the boundaries, and that perhaps that should be a part of, part of this.
And I agree, I think Councilwoman Pastore brought, I'm sorry to cut you off, Councilwoman. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to ask the same thing. You know, the boundaries, bringing it down to I-10 and going a little further, what?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Valenzuela, we will look at expanding the boundaries based upon those areas, and also look at larger areas. Chairwoman Gallego mentioned all the historic districts, and so we'll look at all those things. It really was the, based upon where we're seeing infill and where we've had some existing problems is why the boundaries are what they are tentatively. So we're happy to look at that as well. As part of that same motion, we would be looking at it anyways, because you have to have the boundaries, along with developing the design guidelines, would go hand in hand.
And then again, the motion, bottom line is, it will protect existing neighborhoods from the negative impacts of infill development, but I agree, we should be looking for best practices as well.
Could I add a couple more things onto that? If you don't mind, it's up to you, you guys make the choice. I'm fine with it that way, but again, I want to make sure that we also create enough flexibility for staff to be able to look at some of those areas, we may want to lessen the requirements that are in there. If you want to put another, like, Bridle Path, or a uniqueness, keeping that in an area that they can't do right now. So I'd like to have staff be able to come back with a variety of things that open the door, that allow for uniqueness to occur too. If that's okay.
Of course, I think the spirit of the motion is to do just that, working with our neighborhood groups and keeping that relationship and that dialogue going. But do, how would you suggest we?
Well, just create enough flexibility in your motion to allow staff to come back that, you know, I'm just so concerned about the sameness issue, okay? That everything has to look the same everywhere. It doesn't. And if we could just have that creativity allowed and flexibility built into whatever it is you're coming back that allows staff and the council and the neighbors to really work together, say, "Hey, look, this might work really well here," that you can't do today in this environment.
My understanding is that this, we bless this, it's going to go back out, the neighborhoods and villages and everybody else is going to have comments and be able to work it through on what the dynamics of this new amendment is. And then there's still flexibility within the crafting of this to bring it back, and it would meet all our concerns.
Along with the, I, yes, that's how I see it, because again, working with the neighbor groups, going out to the villages, which we have 15 villages, and they're all very unique within themselves, so I think this does that.
Well, that's why I want to make sure is that we're giving direction to staff in this motion to create a document or a living document that's flexible enough to where not all things are going to work in your district, that they're going to work in mine.
Agreed.
And they're not going to work in 8 or wherever. I want to make sure that whatever rules that they look at, that creates enough flexibility for them to be able to take into consideration the neighborhood that look that way. And you might have people say, "Hey, I want to be able to not have the curb and gutter situation in my neighborhood." You know, I know some of it's required, but maybe we look at that to be able to say, "Hey, maybe I want to have that type of look that I've got out of North Central in my neighborhood." So if you create enough flexibility in this document, and you give staff and, you know, the ability to be able to create that creativity, that's where I'd like to go.
And I'd be comfortable with just starting with Encanto, Central City, and Camelback East, unless?
Well, not Camelback East. I mean, I don't mind you guys wanting to put it in your area. I don't know. I mean, what I'm saying right now is that...
Well, just because Arcadia had been mentioned, so...
Well, Arcadia's a whole different area. I mean, but if you guys want to create this for your own area and these rules, yeah, I want to be careful with, I don't want to put more rules into my area that may not be necessary. We haven't had this problem.
Which villages are you suggesting that this one goes to?
I like positive stuff.
A couple of villages?
I think Chairwoman Gallego is suggesting that instead of all 15 villages, since we are proposing to focus on infill, we wouldn't take it, for example, to Rio Vista Village in the far northern part of the city. So we would focus on, you know, Encanto, Central City, Alhambra, Camelback East, since we are going out to the east over to 44th Street, that's their area. We would capture all the villages, whatever the final boundaries we decide on, if it's in their village, we would take it to them to get input from them on it.
I don't have that problem in my area. You know, I don't want to create, I want to be careful before we start imposing more restrictions in my neighborhoods that would stop good quality projects from coming in. We can originally do that, but we may, I may make a motion to take it out, depending on how restrictive they come back.
Well, that's the thing, is that, is that right now, it's just, let's throw it out to the communities or to the villages, and it's looking at it and then coming back, and it's going to come back to us for a vote to move it to the next.
Yeah, what I don't want to do is stop good quality projects from moving forward, which we've seen in mine. I haven't seen everyone else's, so I don't know. But right now, we've had good, and I don't want to stop momentum from creating, from stopping infill right now. I don't want to see that. Right now, we've got a real good positive thing going in my districts.
I don't think that would do that right now.
But can we keep it out for now, until, and we can always add it in.
Are you talking about keeping out Camelback East?
Yeah, keep it out. If you guys want to create the rules for your own area.
You don't want to go all the way to 44th Street?
I would rather not right now. I'd rather wait and see what the makeup is that comes back before we include that area in there.
Well, Chairwoman Gallego, Councilman DeCiccio, what about if we worked on the design guidelines?
Right.
Come up with exactly what it is? Because the design guidelines are built, are built to be flexible.
If people want to put rules in their area, they can do that. I'd rather not do that.
I don't think we're putting rules in this area. I think we're trying to figure out design guidelines, design what works.
And then we can add it into my area later. I want to see what it says first.
I just think design guidelines are coming, and then we're going to figure it out.
Yeah, we'll come up with exactly what we're proposing, and then we can...
I'm sorry, I'd rather keep my area out. You guys can do it to your own areas, but right now, I want to see what they come back with first before I include my neighborhoods.
I think...
If you guys want to force it on, you can. I think we have a good positive flow going.
If I'm forcing, I'm not...
The purpose of my motion to clarify is not to force anything except for a public process, except for public input, except for working with our neighborhood leaders, except for bringing all stakeholders, including the development community, to the same table with the same information to figure out what would work best for each unique neighborhood through the district system, through the village system. So it's not to, it's not to create the policy now before the discussion. I've said this since taking office, public input is not a box that we simply check. We govern based on public input. That is what I'm forcing. I'm forcing a public process, if anything. So, and I just have to clarify that, Councilman, because I...
Well, you are, if you include my district when I'm saying that, I don't think it's a good idea right now. I want to see what the rules are first. What I don't want to do is create a situation where my neighborhoods are put in a bad place. And I don't know what this is going to look like, and I don't know why you would need to include it if I'm asking you to keep it out for right now, unless you tell me that there's a logical reason to keep it in there.
Because you have infill in there.
I do. And I think that right now, we've got a real good momentum going, and I want to see what the rules are. the rules are first before we include it in there. So I, I'm asking as a friendly motion to keep my district out for now, and we can always add it in later.
Alan, you were mentioning, uh, salute, uh, I'd sound like a solution, would you?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Councilman Valenzuela, what I would propose is that staff develop the exact, uh, language. So the design guidelines, we would write the language, um, we would work with the neighborhood group, talk to the development community as well, get some input on that. And then before we start the public hearing process with the villages and others, we can sit down and talk with each of you, uh, individually about here, since you, you're part of the subcommittee, you've given us some generic input, now we can say, look, here's the specifics, do we have this right? Here's our, our, our math that we're looking at as it relates to your district, and then from that point, we can then move forward. And that way, we can sit down and each of you can see it.
Well, why not take the areas out of it then? I mean, why do you need to do that? Just come back with the policy and then we can make a determination.
Sure.
Just take it out for now and go, and then I'm fine.
Well, I, I'm just gonna respond to, uh, Camelback East because part of District Four is in Camelback East. So if we take, we sit and pick, okay, District Four, I mean, I just think we take it all out and just come with design guidelines and then we can look at everything.
That'll be fine. And that's fine.
Does staff, would staff like us to repeat the current motion?
No. I think we're good, yeah.
All right. So we have a motion on the table and a second?
Yeah, motion and a second.
Wonderful. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you to our community leaders for helping move this forward. And now, as we continue our meeting that seems to have a theme of healthier communities, we are moving on to our graffiti updates. Welcome Chris Halleck back.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. Since last April, uh, we were directed by this subcommittee to go back and provide an update to the anti-graffiti task force of the graffiti free efforts that have been brought to the attention of this subcommittee. Uh, so we're gonna present to you some of the, uh, what we discussed with them and what we heard back from them with you today. Since that time, we were on the cusp of the Zero Graffiti International Conference. It was happening just after the subcommittee last met. Uh, we provided an update to the task force of what we learned of that. Uh, we also were asked to present, uh, the graffiti free proposal, uh, Phoenix, um, proposal that was presented to this task force and referred to the, uh, to the subcommittee referred to the task force, uh, that was created by and authored by three of the task force members, one of which, uh, Ginny Ann Sumner is in attendance here. We also have Ken Clark from the task force in attendance here as well in support. Uh, so we were able to get with them and review the current metrics and processes, explore ideas for improvements, uh, and better coordinate anti-graffiti efforts among different departments and agencies. So when we educated them about the, what we found out at the Zero Graffiti International, staff had attended this and made presentations, uh, some of the takeaways were, uh, they're at now, um, testing two of the products that they learned about during the, the, the conference. The conference had representatives from four different countries, uh, vast numbers across the United States, but, and so they all brought forward their best practices and so staff, uh, tag out recycled paint is one of the products that they're testing as a result of the conference. Uh, as you see here's a before and after picture of recycled paint is basically what they're testing. This is a cement gray that is being tested out there to make sure it works with their products. We've tried, uh, recycled paint in the past and it's not always conducive to, uh, our weather and/or, uh, applications and/or tools that, and mission. So we're gonna continue to test these. However, so far, early indicators, it is working well, but we want to make sure it works throughout the, the hottest days of our summers, et cetera. Uh, it could yield up to 32% savings on the cost of paint if we were able to go to this recycled paint, um, and that could have significant impacts if it was to be successful. Another one of the products being tested from the conference is graffiti safe wipes. These are like little, uh, wipes that you get in little individualized containers. They're fast and easy for staff to use. They're testing them now on various different, uh, hard surfaces, metals, plastics. Uh, shown here is the sign. It's, it's the reflective signs most commonly and the newest signs being used by the streets department, and it works wonderfully on that. It's quick and easy at the same or perhaps even a cost savings. Uh, we're still figuring out how many sites they can remove per wipe, uh, by folding it and keeping it moist. Uh, so there may be, uh, cost savings as well as the productivity enhancements on this product. Right now, it's just being added, again, tested through the hot summer to see how, uh, these top products react to our summers. Next, we presented, uh, or had actually Ginny Ann presented her graffiti, uh, free Phoenix proposal to the task force and we obtained, uh, and have some responses. Uh, this graph here shows, uh, that where city employees should be responsible for reporting all graffiti on our material streets, city property signs passed, uh, from other departments. For the time period where we removed 75,000 graffiti sites, uh, those came from 20,836 different resident complaints. Uh, did have, and we, and we are looking for steps to improve how staff initiated complaints come in, but we did have about 1,800 staff complaints come in. This graph also shows for every one complaint we remove, uh, there was about four other proactive sites removed by staff out in the, in the field. Another recommendation was about graffiti detectives creating and adding evidence to their files. They do have files. Uh, we're continuing to search better, more efficient ways that we can take evidence from various different sources amongst the other departments as well as residents. Again, 75,000 removals in the time period, uh, related to 2036 graffiti related arrests, 108 adults were prosecuted for graffiti related, uh, crimes and 280 juveniles referred to the Maricopa County Juvenile System. So we're gonna work together with, uh, all the parties to enhance these numbers. There was a big emphasis in this proposal to have more emphasis on the enforcement side and apprehension, and that's what we're gonna look to have improvements. Additionally, reports should be made to one phone number, email and app connected to NSD. Uh, we, in the last year, had created one, one number for the department, 602-534-4444. That's the only number we promote for NSD, for any, any blight related, including graffiti. Uh, additionally, as a result of this proposal, where we consolidated many different web addresses for reporting blight to just blight@phoenix.gov. Uh, we, we've covered with this subcommittee and the task force the MyPhoenix app, which is currently still available for smartphone users that can download and use the app, but we're looking at enhanced ways that this information can be used by residents to lead to the apprehension process, which was being, uh, really pushed by the authors of this proposal. Graffiti busters should share site evidence with graffiti detectives. We do do that now. Uh, they have a proprietary camera that's a GPS coordinates. It is uploaded into a national database called Graffiti Tracker, is utilized by police, prosecutors' offices in Maricopa County when we are able to apprehend and convict and take to trial a, a vandal, and it is used. Uh, part of this proposal was to see how other types of evidence might also be adapted and incorporated into the apprehension conviction process. Uh, graffiti should be removed by graffiti busters and are referred to responsible parties. We do that as much as we can. Sometimes a site might be lingering because we don't have a permission slip from the property owner, uh, or it may be on a utility box that the utility company has their own preference to remove it. We do refer those. We can't control how long those work out. However, as we look through these new products, we might continue to work with those agencies to maybe convince them that we were able to, uh, abate it sooner if, with an approved product and/or process which they would like. Uh, so we'll continue to work those relationships and, and administer expedited graffiti removal where we can. Uh, the task force should maintain a regular meeting schedule. A direct result of this, at the meeting we had in May, uh, they agreed to start meeting bi-monthly, every other two months, uh, starting in September, pretty much September through May, they want to start meeting and have good, um, progress towards graffiti free efforts, so. Uh, we are currently working with the mayor's office to fully staff the task force. There's a lot of vacancies on it. We definitely like to get both of the new council persons, memberships as part of that. Additionally, Councilman Nowakowski, uh, had offered, uh, to the chair of this subcommittee to be a co-chair on that. I believe the, the chair is willing to accept that. So we are working with the mayor's office to make all those things happen so we have a good, healthy task force to undergo the many action plan items we hope to bring forward to both the subcommittee and the task force. Efforts within departments are often segmented without communication, creating inefficiency and redundancy. Uh, this no doubt has happened over time. We have worked with a lot of departments over time, but as a direct result of this recommendation, we have, uh, created a graffiti working team, graffiti free working team amongst various different departments and, including the county. And we do have a member of the Maricopa County Attorney's Office here, Mary Marshall. Uh, we've had attendance at the task force meeting and a commitment that they'd like to be a regular member of that task force where we start, uh, creating some of these action type things that we want to bring back here in the fall. Many of these, uh, including the graffiti detective sergeant, uh, Jamie Rothschild is here as well. A high commitment, as you'll see, is, is some of the, the new outreach plan that they've established, uh, some new, uh, education things out there. So, running into that, some of the direction we received from the task force was to move forward with the implementation of the education outreach plan that was attached to the council report, and that we'll be highlighting here in a second. To move forward with Connecticut Best Practice Survey, to see what other cities are doing in various different areas that we might be able to incorporate, uh, as well as to develop enhanced metrics and outcomes. That's everybody's, uh, wish to do so we can measure ourselves and how much, uh, increased performance we're having. Uh, we're gonna tie all of this together with an action plan that we'd like to come back in the fall with. The education outreach plan overall, there's some enhancements we recently developed. Uh, the graffiti detectives created a graffiti 101 and added it to our neighborhood college. Uh, the detective that presented this had a great, uh, outcome. Uh, attendance at his just last month, I believe, and is, is super excited to, to repeat this on a frequent basis, so we're gonna work with them to have these as, as frequent as we can. Uh, continue to partnering with the housing department to, to work with youth to abate graffiti and around their sites and other, uh, parts of the community. We're also working with other departments on how we graffiti, report graffiti, track graffiti removals amongst our departments that we can provide, again, with better metrics. Strategies and goals that are included in the plan includes increased use of social media, and I'll just say, when we had the graffiti 101, we as a department, we've been using social media, various different ones. Uh, we tried to use it on the, uh, nextdoor.com site. Uh, we don't get a lot of pull with it, but our PIO convinced the police department to post it. When the police department to post it, we get great results, so we did that the day before and I think, uh, reservations for the class doubled like overnight. It was incredible response. So we knew now just not social media, but who is posting in social media has a direct effect. Uh, we're gonna continue to work enhanced, uh, education efforts with a number of different groups, community-based groups, schools, property owners, uh, other departments. As I said, we've already started discussions with various different ones about how we can train and report, in addition to enhanced training with the police officers. The best practice survey is going out, is going to be including, uh, areas in the, uh, education, outreach and awareness, abatement, other design deterrents that other cities may be using that we might want to look at as we do, uh, text amendments in the future, enforcement, apprehension and penalties associated with graffiti. And the areas of enhanced metrics and outcomes, task force would like to be involved as much as we'd like to, uh, elicit any, uh, metrics that you all like to see. We collect a lot of data. It's just a matter of which, you know, maybe identifying some metrics that we may not be collecting. Uh, we have some, uh, hardware improvements that we're gonna be having coming in software that we might be able to take on more data, but we'll, we'll find out what the task force and the subcommittee like to hear, uh, to see as far as reporting goes and we'll work with those. Of course, we'll continue tracking those and, and developing metrics in these areas of education enforcement and abatement. This all culminate with a action plan that we'd like to bring back in the fall. Uh, anything we learned from the best practices that's administrative in nature, we'd like to implement immediately and we'll report out on that, uh, as we come back, but we'll continue to work with our partners on anti-graffiti legislation and take all the best practices, input and create a refined plan to come back to both the task force and the subcommittee in the fall. So here today, basically to ask for approval for the education outreach plan that was as part of the packet as well as, uh, at direction on any other areas of metrics and, and things to look at as we come back in the fall.
Wonderful. Thank you. We have one card from Ginny Ann Sumner. Thank you for your work on this.
Madam Chair, member, excuse me, Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee, let me state first, Chris, may I have a copy of the presentation that you just gave in response back and forth? I, I would like that to look at, please. But I'd like to move from that to a very positive note. And then as first, I'd like to thank Councilman DeCiccio because back in February, when you asked for two things, that started all of this. But most of all, I'd also like to thank the subcommittee. Because of your support and what you stated in April, we are here today with a very positive report for you. I'd also like to thank NSD. I'm, I'm certain that, that Chris cringed when I said, Chris, I'm not going away. But I really do want to thank Chris under his direction, the work of NSD team, that we have established a working relationship and you have the report that's before you today. I do believe with these changes, we're moving away from saying success is just the number of sites we painted out to effectively, to effectively eliminating graffiti. In the process of discussing the outlet outreach plan, I did make some suggestions. One of them is in regards to the educational material. For example, for a business that we have someone from the act, from the business community acts review the material. Um, I also suggested that under the social media, that the messages be coordinated and consistent. I think that's important, especially when, for you and the mayor and the council to going out. I'd also ask that we find a way to explore or a way to, find a way to publicize when an actual graffiti vandal has been arrested or, or, or received consequences. Not that I want the notoriety for the vandal, but instead, I think it's important that citizens realize that working with graffiti free Phoenix, they can make a difference. Another key component is working with staff and all the departments to realize that we are one city. And when they're out and about and seeing graffiti, report graffiti and see if we as a city will work on, on actually cleaning up the graffiti, so it's not just so much citizen-based. I'd like to thank Patricia and Suzanne. They couldn't make it today, but I know they'll be watching and I want to say you ladies are awesome. Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the subcommittee and NSD. I'm really looking forward to, to working with the subcommittee, NSD and the, and the anti-graffiti task force in this, creating a graffiti fee free Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. And we will have a, a busy September because I think we will be looking at many graffiti related items, among many other items, but I am personally very excited for us to look at better prevention through better design because every time a cinder block wall goes up, I think we know what to expect. And so there's some low hanging fruit in that area as well. Councilman DeCiccio?
Was it the direction then that Councilwoman Pastor was looking at, to have, uh, Councilman Nowakowski kind of restart the, the committee again? Is that what you were thinking about or?
Committee.
Or the graffiti committee and move?
Oh, I think Kate's gonna be a co-chair, right?
A co-chair?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Gallego.
Okay. Is that already occurring or do you have to make a motion for that?
I understand that we don't need a motion for that.
You don't? Okay, good. Fantastic. Uh, I'm glad that that's occurring. Uh, the other is, thank you for Ginny Ann for saying that, but the bottom line is that your direction is, you, people don't, have been around just recently too, and I mean, Ginny Ann's been around for over 20 years working on graffiti related items here at the city of Phoenix and has done a fantastic job. Matter of fact, if you look back in the late 1990s and early 2000s, you know, Phoenix got multiple awards for our work on graffiti. And it is really that old broken window syndrome. When you create something that creates an eyesore and it only has to be small, it's just like a package. If you were to go buy a box of cereal, you saw one that was all kind of crumpled up a little bit and you had one right next to it, even a competing brand that wasn't, you're not gonna buy that one. It may have all the great stuff inside of it, but because it doesn't look appealing to you, appealing to your eye, you're not gonna buy it. Likewise, you're gonna think poorly of an area that has any type of tagging in it or you have any type of graffiti in there. It doesn't necessarily just have to be graffiti. It could be broken windows. It could be boarded homes. It could be all that. So, um, I'm applaud the work of staff on this. Thank you so much for doing that, Ginny Ann. Thank you so much for doing that Ginny Anne. Thank you so much for like 20 plus years of work here at G.G. George, I'm sure you were involved in it too. All the work that you've done, otherwise we wouldn't be here today. And, you know, most of us don't really realize, know the amount of work that these individuals do. You know, I really can't stand graffiti. I mean, I just really find that offensive for any neighborhood. And to give you one more example, if you don't mind, is that I was talking to some, you know, the biking community, I was real involved with some of those individuals and we went on a ride with them and they said, hey, how do you feel when you go into a neighborhood and you see bikes all over the place? I said, well, I feel really good about it. And it's just the idea of whether you feel good or you feel bad. And it's as simple as that of whether people like a neighborhood or they don't like it. If they feel comfortable, they feel safe in it. It's all simple little impressions that are given that, you know, most of us don't even pay attention to sometimes. So, I really applaud the work that you've done on this thing. I don't know if it requires any type of motion here, Councilwoman. Go ahead.
Staff recommended motion.
I make a motion to implement the proposed education and outreach plan with, including or working with Ginny Anne on those specific areas.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aries unanimously. Wonderful. Thank you all for your leadership and I look forward to getting more involved. It was the most, the top rated segment of my first TV show was on fighting graffiti, at least based on clicks on social media, which is not scientific, but as good as we can get. We have one agenda item, the temporary fencing requirements enforcement. It is not for action, so I'm interested in the committee's feedback of whether they would like us to continue studying this or hear it today.
I'm okay with continuing.
Would you be offended if we were to continue studying this and come back in fall? Wonderful. Sorry to make you wait through the whole meeting, but hopefully this is good news. And I don't have any cards on that. Is there anyone here who came particularly for temporary fencing? All right, then seeing that, I think we should continue. Do I need a motion to do that or since it's not for action? All right, then we are moving on to item 11, future agenda items.
Fencing.
Yeah, and fencing will be at the top of that list. I've also asked staff to come back and look at some of the lessons we've learned from Reinvent Phoenix and related to our infill standards, but also on the, some glamorous topics, including sewer code and we will have that in the fall because it is important as we have infrastructure challenges that are preventing some of the developments. So, something to look forward to in the fall. And any other committee members want to mention anything for future agenda items? All right, seeing none, moving on to the call to the public. I do not see any additional cards, so with that, we are adjourned.